Left the house and like.
Oh.
Downpour, so I'm like, oh yeah.
What I like to do is do it on Sunday this morning. How you doing?
Good.
How you doing?
Good.
Like. Can I see that a little two things?
Yeah, right.
That's last week I realized I was. The thing that's important. Do it.
Uh. I think anyone's here.
No.
I should have said. That's one.
Well, I spoke though.
Yeah.
Um, I didn't.
No, I was sitting in the car to wait for the rain to let up.
I didn't, I didn't see the car.
Yeah.
All of a sudden. Yeah. Oh. So what's in this, what's in that? That's the same in the area. Now, yeah, the ground is under some change. Yeah. Um. Just planning to do. But I think it's all. Either made it wrong or. I think it's just, it's all. Not. It seems. I think it's there.
No, I did.
Lot, yeah.
Do that, but it takes anybody.
It's a big, um, it's, it's all part.
It's a theory, but that's not.
That's not. And why do we have to come in and, you know, there is a week, is there like a funding issue? Is they have to ask something going through the deadline or is it?
A house. Where I can do. We have to talk to. Don't talk. Very fucking. Cause I think it's not very. It's often. Either on side or at the warehouse. You know, they. When it's. That's close. They let the gateway work. It works that much. I mean, it's not just a fair. Our particular. I think it's important. I think it's not just that. The comp. That's true. Say. Let's get the same as if. And poof. I sort of, of process is. Yes, but tell me. That's.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I always really get. And. I know. It is. Something. It's a good discussion. Again, we've, we've done something to get. Got a funding. That, that. It was by, uh.
Good.
In order to get a funding, I mean, a promising. I'm. It's a good work. But this is. In the center. The funding. That. Other than course, yeah. Are you still? No, no, they, um. Their history. This is. And this is. So. That's right. Of course. I'm. See. Uh. Evidence, uh, what he's. This is. But it is. So we think that for. Or the product. That's all. Having to do. He's also. So they were. Do it. So. I would ask. I want to do it. I mean, you got, you got to do injustice sometimes.
Yeah, no, it is. The right.
Yeah. So now they think they have it. Now they're. It's.
That it hurts it.
Stuart, well, sir, how you doing?
Nice. This is ready. We don't.
Uh, no. Particularly. What is it?
Right. Umbrella. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Oh.
Yeah, this.
Yeah. Right?
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Pontiac Planning Commission meeting for August third. I will call the meeting to order. I'll briefly introduce everyone. To my far left is Donovan Smith. And then Commissioner Vernita Duval. Commissioner Christopher Northcross. Vern Gustafson on my far right. And then Tim Shepherd and Mona Parlove. And my name is Ashley Fegley. Um, roll call, please.
Uh, yes, uh, also just make sure you have your, uh, microphones on. Uh, Chair Fegley.
Present.
Uh, Vice Chair Parlove.
Present.
Um, Mike McGinnis is not here as of yet. Might, might show up. Uh, Commissioner Duval.
Present.
Commissioner Northcross.
Present.
And Commissioner Shepherd.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Um, I believe there are no amendments to the agenda. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, I, I do, I would like to, under O Business seven point two. I'd like to put on the agenda to, uh, for your approval to schedule a special meeting on Wednesday, August twenty fourth.
Okay. Can I get a motion to amend the agenda to include seven point two, schedule a special meeting for August twenty fourth?
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. Roll call.
Uh, Commissioner Northcross.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Shepherd.
Yes.
Uh, Vice Chair Parlove.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Duval. And Chair Fegley.
Yes.
Uh, motion to amend the agenda. Passes five one, five zero.
Okay, next is meeting minutes for review for the July sixth, twenty twenty meeting. Uh, Commissioner.
Should we do an approval of the agenda as amended?
Yeah, definitely.
Oh, I thought that was just the amendment of the agenda.
Yeah, and then approval of it, yep.
Okay, we carried both in all in one.
Yeah.
Okay, excuse me.
Yep.
Great.
Good evening.
Excuse me.
Commissioner McGinnis, welcome to the meeting. Um.
On the minutes, none.
Okay. Commissioner Duval, do you have any? Nope. Commissioner Northcross, do you have any changes?
Oh, excellent. No change.
Commissioner Parlove?
No changes.
Um, I do not have any changes. Uh, may I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes for July sixth?
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. Roll call.
Uh, Commissioner Northcross.
Yes, to approve.
Uh, Commissioner Parlove.
Yes, to approve.
Uh, Commissioner Shepherd.
Yes, to approve.
Commissioner Duval.
Yes, to approve.
Uh, Commissioner McGinnis.
Yes, to approve.
And Chair Fegley.
Yes, to approve.
Motion passes. Six, zero.
There are no special presentations, so our first public hearing will be for SPR twenty-two dash nineteen. Uh, preliminary site plan review for six, four, five, South Old Telegraph Road and ten fifty-six Golf Drive.
And I'll go ahead and, I may try to start there.
Yep, thank you.
All right, so good evening, everyone. Uh, the first item today is a two-part, uh, application, there are two applications, SPR, uh, two, two, one, nine. And the, uh, public hearing is related to ZMA two, two, dash, zero, four. So we will.
I don't think your microphone's working.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Oh, that might.
Uh, so first, yep, that's better. Um, so first, we will address the, uh, preliminary site plan review and the, the context of the site. And then, uh, following, we will address the public hearing and propose zoning map amendment. Um, so the preliminary site plan, SPR two, two, dash, one, nine, uh, behalf of the applicant Vincent Cireo, Get Your Greens LLC. For parcel numbers six, four, one, four, three, one, three, eight, one, zero, two, seven, and six, four, one, four, three, one, four, five, eight, dash, zero, one, zero. Uh, both of these parcels are currently zoned C one local business and a portion is also zoned P one parking. Um, and the request is to rezone these parcels from two in one. Um, and a preliminary site plan review, conditional rezoning to allow what would be a proposed medical marijuana grower and processor. So for context, the property is located, um, at the intersection of Golf Drive, uh, South Telegraph. Um, and will be east of Orchard Lake Road. Uh, it's a total of three parcels. Um, but the rezoning request is actually directly related to two of the three, um, directly fronting, uh, Golf Drive and South Telegraph. Um, not directly the Dover residential parcel, uh, but it is, would be included in the, uh, site or the preliminary site plan as a whole. As mentioned, uh, on the zoning map, the parcels are zoned C one local business, uh, a district that is designated for mixed use developments and uses, uh, supporting housing. The surrounding residential neighborhood and, and local businesses. And then you can see the area designated in blue are the, uh, P one parking parcels. Um, which currently maintain what is that vacant, uh, parking, well, the parking lot, the vacant land there. Uh, the applicant did provide, uh, a zoning site context, so you can see, um, again, those blue areas are zoned and would be reserved for parking. And the purple areas are the C one local business zoning designation. And you can see the footprint of those buildings, um, as they exist today. Um, the applicant did provide us, uh, in your packet, a, uh, site plan or preliminary site plan. Um, and I provided the, uh, landscaping plan as proposed. Um, we have not done a full review on these. We've just looked at it from a preliminary standpoint, and, and these are the, uh, drawings they provided. Um, so in the preliminary site plan review, uh, regarding those uses, the proposed medical marijuana grower and processor uses are not permitted at that subject location. Uh, they, those uses are not permitted outside of the designated zoning overlay districts, the Seashavas, uh, downtown, uh, and Walton Boulevard overlay districts. Um, so because they are not permitted in these areas, uh, it does require a zoning map amendment and a special exemption permit, which is, uh, the reason they are requesting these changes today. Um, conditionally, the, the site plan does meet the requirements in terms of, uh, the items I will mention on the next slide. Um, and if the project is approved and permitted to go forward, they would be required to, uh, complete and acquire the requested M one light manufacturing zoning designation. Uh, they will be required to complete and, uh, get approval for a full site plan review and come back before the planning commission. Uh, they will also be required to, uh, receive a special exemption permit from the planning commission. And then, uh, they would also be required to, uh, get all of the licenses for the proposed medical marijuana uses from the city clerk's office. And I'll.
And through the chair, if I may, um, in their, um, and we'll get into it a little bit more of a deeper dive when we talk about the zoning map amendment with conditions. They did, in their conditions, they did, um, wa- want, waive the, uh, site or the special exemption permit approval, uh, for this project. Just want to give you a heads up. So that would not, if, if it is approved, uh, by city council, that condition, they would not have to come back to planning commission for a special exemption permit.
And, and if I may add, it, the public hearing for the special exemption, the public hearing would not take place. They would still come back for a site plan.
Right.
And that still has to be approved by you. But the additional criteria to hold a public hearing and acquire a special exemption permit is a condition that they are requesting to be waived a part of their rezoning.
So may I ask a question? How does that benefit us because they've chosen to waive that?
They are able to re, uh, with conditional rezonings, the applicant can make, uh, proposed conditions. The city cannot alter those conditions. So the applicants, uh, are choosing to request those conditions for the reasons they feel necessary to move the project forward.
Okay, so then it eliminates the opportunity for the residents to have any input or express opinion in a public forum.
Yes, it would not allow the public to engage with the project from a public hearing, yes.
Okay, just a, just a little footnote, I don't remember this being brought to us before while I've been on the planning commission, has this happened before?
Uh, I do not, as long as I've been here, I have not seen a, uh, scenario where a conditional rezoning requests the special exemption be waived. So this would be, uh, the first time.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, so moving forward, as I mentioned in the previous slide, uh, the, the preliminary site plan does meet, uh, the standards for, uh, preliminary site plan approval. Uh, meaning it does have proper circulation, um, between the, the streets and the buildings. Um, the buildings and structures are located in a way that is in compliance and minimizes effects, um, of the surrounding area. Uh, the natural features of the property would be maintained in addition to those, uh, additional landscaping and natural elements. Um, the overall site and layout, uh, as proposed, it is in compliance and does not adversely affect the surrounding community. Um, and then fin- uh, finally, they would be required to still meet all of the additional site plan requirements, uh, which we'll kind of touch on a little later on. Um, from a, uh, preliminary site plan perspective. Um, and then just some notes related to medical marijuana uses. Um, all medical marijuana uses are subject to site plan review, so they would have to, uh, bring that back forth. Um, medical marijuana uses outside the overlay districts, uh, at, in compliance with the zoning ordinance today, sorry. Um, does require special exemption permit, so that is a requirement, uh, located within our zoning ordinance and within the medical marijuana overlay district ordinance. Um, we have provided, uh, in your packet, uh, the conditions for special exemption approval. Um, I, I won't go into all of these today, but they are provided. And if it does come back at a later time, these will be those standards, the typical special exemption criteria. And there are, uh, seven of them. And then that concludes the, uh, preliminary site plan review for, um, SPR two, two, dash, one, nine. Thank you.
Okay, so there's no real changes to the site or anything at this point because they want to just see if the property can be rezoned?
This would be correct, yes.
Okay.
Chair.
Is the petitioner here this evening?
Yes.
Good evening. Please state your name and address for the record.
How you doing? My name is Angelo Taylor. Um. I own properties in Pontiac. One is one Franklin, uh, one fifty Franklin. Uh, the other one would be, uh, two oh one State Street. And, um, I had the pleasure of going down this road with them as a business consultant. And, um, I also had the pleasure of going down the road with Glenwood Plaza, uh, when they were going through their, uh, situation. I watched this James, that's the owner of, uh, Get Your Greens, go through this process and basically took an area, I'm born and raised in Pontiac. Took an area that's been totally, totally just in a terrible situation. And, yes, they already did major changes to it, major. Like what we see of those buildings now was not what Pontiac is used to seeing before they even had the opportunity to get anything done. And I do want to say that as they go through this process, I kept wondering, what's the big deal with people saying, hey, Pontiac is hard to work with, hard to do? And I'm like, I'm born and raised in Pontiac and I know these people. These are all good people. These are not people hard to work with. But then when we go down the process, we meet a situation like going through this process with these people and they get a emails, going back and forth, trying to do everything that's compliant. I, I mean, I met with, uh, some of you, uh, already about just them being compliant. I wanted to make sure if I'm gonna work with them, they at least have to do what y'all say and how y'all say it. I can really assure that I've been sitting with them and they did their best to do what y'all said, how y'all said it. And, um, to get met with some confusion or conflict a day beforehand, it's, you know, that, that, I, I got a real view of saying, oh. That's the frustration that they're talking about. That's the confusion. And I look up here now, I know that that confusion don't apply to y'all. I know how brilliant and smart y'all are, but yet and still, I see where, I had an opportunity to see where the confusion lies in our processes in Pontiac. I seen these people go through their situation the best way that y'all saw fit, just for them to come to this situation now and the day before, to realize that there may be a conflict. I'm hoping today that that can be, uh, solved and y'all will see that this man's vision is real good for this city. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Vince and I am the owner of the property. I brought Jesse here, he's their surveyor. So I figured if you had some questions for him, we could have you ask him and then we could further go into the second part of that, which we'll address with all the other questions of the conditional zoning. So if you had any questions for the preliminary site plan, just, you can maybe speak to Jesse.
Okay. Um, I guess, is there, um, and maybe it's in here already, but could you just go over what the stipulations for the conditional rezoning are?
Uh, we can actually, I'll defer to Vern, he'll do the, uh, presentation for the conditional zoning.
Okay.
I, I think it'd be a good idea that, uh, and then once we have an opportunity to present, uh, here in regards to both the site plan and also the zoning map amendment with conditions. We can obviously, the applicants, and then we can open up, uh, for public hearing.
Yes, please.
At that time.
Okay.
Uh, go to the next slide, please. Uh, so as Donovan mentioned, uh, we talked about the existing zoning within that area that's been highlighted in red, uh, primarily C one local business. And, and I think what's important is, and, and we'll, we'll touch base with it in regards from a master plan standpoint also, but from a zoning perspective, when they talks about businesses or uses that are within or classified within that C one district, uh, th- they are excluded. Uh, they're not included with that because we, we, the tendency is to not create a nuisance immediately to the re- immediately to the surrounding residential development. Is, is really the intent of that C one zoning district existing. Uh, we look at future land use, and we talked about this before, um, back in twenty twenty. Uh, this, this project came to us in a similar fashion, except for it was just the half of the site that you're seeing right now, where Donovan's with the highlighter. It was just the one parcel, it wasn't the other parcel that fronts along Golf Drive. Uh, and that was, um, in twenty twenty. That, that applicant came, same applicant, uh, looking into do at that time, it was, uh, growing and processing for just that one portion of the site. Uh, planning commission at that time, uh, did not recommend approval and it was, and that, that vote was, um, held, uh, by city council at that time in twenty twenty. But when you get, uh, let me just go back in regards, particularly in regards to future land use. The future land use does show it, you know, in regards to this whole healthcare, uh, center. And I, and I, you can kind of see why in, in some ways, because of the fact of where it's located in regards to good access. You're also talking about, we do have four healthcare centers, uh, here in the city of Pontiac. We also have the opportunity to take those centers and foster it into an opportunity for other medical services and laboratories and offices. And I, and, and that's what I, I think the applicant back in twenty eighteen, when he came to the planning commission, uh, he did get approval for, uh, medical office buildings and also an event center, if you remember correctly. Uh, a number of improvements, uh, were made to the site, uh, same thing with the buildings, uh, but, uh, the buildings never received a certificate of occupancy at, as of yet, or still today. Uh, so it really becomes this kind of, what we kind of refer to as this medical hub that's, that the future land use plan is, is trying to illustrate within this particular area. Uh, next slide. I think we already covered the master plan. So when we, um, and I think what's important to note in regards to, wish we had a slide up here. When we talk about existing development patterns, it kind of replicates in regards to what I was just saying in regards to what's occurring from a zoning perspective. But, um, also I think it's important that the frontages of, uh, South Boulevard, um, particularly in this area, say, south of Orchard Lake. Uh, there appears to be smaller type of businesses because of the, the size configuration of the parcels themselves. Uh, lends itself to more of office, business services and other types of uses unrelated to, um, uses such as industrial type of services. Um, that you do see on the north side of Orchard, uh, north side of Orchard Lake Road on North, Old Telegraph. But the, if you look at the sites, they're a large, deeper, a little bit wider, I mean, width wise, but definitely deeper to accommodate what is needed for a building of manufacturing and so forth. Um, next sign. Uh, same thing goes with the existing zoning. If you start looking at obviously the frontage patterns, not just in the city of Pontiac, but also in regards of Bloomfield Township. Uh, all of the frontages along, uh, that, South Old Telegraph, uh, is non-residential. It, it's not, it's not industrial uses, except for when you go north of that on Orchard Lake Road, we do get into some industrial areas. The master plan, we kind of already covered it. So when we look at conditional rezonings, I, I think what's important is, and we talked about this, you know, obviously he's looking to go from a C one and P one. C one local business and P one parking to M one light manufacturing for the proposed medical marijuana, um, grow and processing uses here. Uh, we talked about in September of twenty twenty, um, the, um, the vote on half of the parcel there at ending in zero, two, seven. Uh, we also, uh, looked at, um, the attached conditional agreement, which is in part of your packet. Um, and, um, as I, we noted that they're requesting to waive the requirement for a special land use approval for, uh, and just allow the use under the conditional rezoning approval. Um, and as we've stated before, is that the city cannot request or suggest modifications to those conditions. So what, what's given is, is what has been determined by the applicant and we're reviewing just the zoning, but also the, these, these conditions as part of this plan. Next slide. Um, also I would like to make note that, um, definitely that the agreement would need to be reviewed by our city attorney to form. Uh, there is a little bit discrepancy in regards to the agreement, needs to be revised, uh, basically talking about the existing zoning on the parcel sixty-four, fourteen, thirty-one. Four, fifty-eight, zero, uh, one, zero is zone C one local business and also P one parking. Also, uh, to obtain, um, site plan approval, uh, noted in condition two, um, there's a discrepancy between, uh, it's written as eighteen and in parentheses, it says twenty-four. So that needs to be also, um, vetted and made sure that that is, uh, uh, true to form in regards to what they. to what the applicant is really requesting. Okay? Next slide. So we talked about the aspect of waiving requirements of the special land use, also obtaining, agrees to obtain the site plan approval either between 18 or 24 months of the effective date of the ordinance amendment that's been approved for rezoning and also the zoning map amendment. They're also suggesting that the full, the planning commission shall become the final say in the binding development plan for the property, which is accurate. And the final site plan should be valid for 24 months, and the owner agrees to complete the development of the proposal, proposed development within 48 months of obtaining building permits. Last item at the bottom of this slide just speaks to the owner's commitment for the proposed development to be properly maintained, operating as what the proposed development plan has situated, and meets all the terms and conditions as it relates to codes and ordinances, making all the approvals through city engineering, fire department, and also building and safety. When we start to look at the criteria, and we, I think we said it once, or maybe even twice, and I'll say it again, as described as part of our plan for the master plan or the future land use plan for the city of Pontiac, particularly in this area, really is not consistent with the goals and policies and objectives of the city's master plan, based upon the fact of planning for the future in regards to office, healthcare type of hub that is being projected along Old South Telegraph Road, which, so from that criteria does not comply. Since the early 60s, this project, this site has been developed, so any of its geological and natural resources have been lost. So there's nothing to, nothing that we need to be concerned about from the standpoint of preserving and protecting those features, so that does comply with our rezoning criteria. I would say that it was, the next criteria is kind of interesting, because the applicant did, back in 2018, he did commit and prepare a site plan and prepare development drawings for approval, and made attempts in regards of site improvements to develop it as a medical center and also an event center. However, and that was in November of 2018, I can't explain what the rationale was not to complete the project, but at this point in time. So when you talk about showing us evidence that you cannot, you know, that you can't just do that, we saw an attempt to make it work, so we're saying it basically does not comply with that requirement as showing us evidence that you cannot do that project. Also, that doesn't comply in regards to when you talk about the plan development being within M1 light manufacturing with conditions, limiting it to just a grow and processing facility, would not be compatible with the business services and offices that are in that general area, and also with, in addition to the nearby residential neighborhoods that are within very close proximity, further to the east. And also, I guess the question would be is, what will happen in regards to the impact on or influence other future development potentially in this area if this proposed use was going to go into this site or this area of roughly about, it's about four and a half acres. Between the three existing buildings, we have roughly about 52,800 square feet of building. Two buildings are two-story, and one building is three stories. We talk about number five, the existing utilities and services, they're there, they do have the capacity, that was confirmed, so that does comply. We talk about the traffic. Yeah, we would say that, yes, Old South Telegraph and Orchard Lake Road in general proximity to the site probably is sufficient, or is sufficient in regards to providing capacity for any proposed, that proposed use of grow and processing with suggested number of employees that would be there, also in regards to any deliveries, and depending on how deliveries are handled. The only question now becomes, because now we're also looking at the site over on Gulf Drive, Gulf Drive is a pretty primary east-west connector for the south part of the city, very bad condition, I understand, but it does go through quite a bit of residential area, so I am a little bit concerned in regards to the impact associated with this use, associated with any type of traffic patterns from this development. When we talk about, I think what's also the boundaries of the rezoning, I think primarily, it's not so much the regulations or the requirements of setbacks, yes, setbacks are there. It's really the intent, and I tried to hone in in regards to my comments, in regards to the intent of the C1 zoning district, was to provide types of uses that not, would not be hazardous or would not be impactful upon residential areas. So that does not comply. And number eight is not appropriate from our perspective, the city's perspective of the seat, and we'd rather see the existing C1 local business zoning district remain. Last two items, we, and I'm sure the commission would understand, that would be very inappropriate for us to revise our existing C1 zoning designation and incorporate industrial uses within that district. And from our perspective also, the rezoning is not considered to be much more appropriate than what's already currently located within that zoning district. And would not, would not, I would say that in regards to would create an isolated M1 light manufacturing district. We understand there's M2 further to the north. There's a little bit in Bloomfield Township that is much, not really heavy or light manufacturing. It's more garden and nursery types of uses that have gone in there, that's much more compatible with the retail that's fronting along. And they also, within the area, have a larger depth in regards to those existing zoning districts. So from that standpoint, that does not comply. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that the commission may have, or if you would like to hear a public comment at this time.
In the conditional rezoning, is there a stipulation that if the business does not move forward, that it will revert back to the C1, or will it maintain the M1 zoning?
Their condition did not stipulate a reverter in it in regards to, after a certain period of time. It just stipulated in regards to length of site plan, how long it would take them to actually fully develop the project, but no, it was, it was not stipulated as a condition.
Okay. Because routinely, whenever we have something that's bumped up to an M1, there's always a stipulation that if the proposed project does not move forward, it will revert back to the C1. And that is not the case in this proposal.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
May I address a few things, please?
Yes, you may.
Sure. So I'd like to start off with, I did not get the report of objections from the city until yesterday. So it kind of gave me a short amount of time to prepare for this meeting. Secondly, I don't recall anything in the conditional rezoning where I took out the special exemption part of that agreement. I have no problem with having the community involved. I've walked the neighborhoods, I went door to door, and I've explained to the neighbors what I wanted to do there. I have a packet full of signatures, and also a biography, and also other projects I've worked on in the past to show you that I have a good background in what I've done in the previous. Thirdly, in 2018, I did come in front of you guys for medical offices and event center, but then COVID happened, and now COVID with, no one wants to go to event centers. I've been trying to fix the place up. I've got graffiti all over my walls on a $200,000 re-bricking project I just did, and it's very disheartening, and I put a lot of time and effort into this. And lastly, in 2020, I did come in front of the planning board, but was for a partial, I had some bad advice from an advisor then, he told me just do a partial rezoning of the whole parcel, and that's why it was not approved then. So I would like to hand you the packets of the signatures and the previous reconstruction I did of other projects. And I'd also have, like my attorney to speak as well, after you have your, you know, questions or whatever you need to have.
Okay.
Or public comment or whatever.
This is a public hearing, so normally what I do is I'll open up the public comment, get that information from anyone who would like to speak. Everyone will have two or three minutes to speak, we'll get the questions and answer them at the end. Then after public comments, we'll go to the commissioners and answer any of our questions and kind of...
Sure. I mean, if it was such a great site and everyone wanted it, the building's been vacant for over 20 years now. So it's not like somebody wants to just go in there and open businesses and hospital buildings. I mean, I'm just really frustrated because I've been trying to work with the city, and I've done everything they've asked me to do, and then I come in here with the report a day before the meeting. I just thought that I should have, you know, had more time to prepare for it. Regardless, I would still like to hand out my packet while you do the public comment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, and also, if there's some unanswered questions, or you don't feel like we have enough information, we can always table this measure to the next planning commission meeting, and then maybe try and see if we can come to some type of...
Sure.
Better relationship here.
Sure. I personally wrote that conditional rezoning with my lawyer, and I do not remember putting anything about taking the special exemption off. I would not do that. I want to work with the community, I'm a community, you know, activist, I go and clean the parks, I work with the council people. I mean, I'm here for the community, not just for myself. So, thank you.
Well, let's open public comments. If anyone would like to speak, please approach podium, state your name and address for the record. And again, we'll answer all the questions at the end, so feel free to ask anything that you need.
Okay. My name is Matty McKinney Hatchet. I live at 135 Perkins Street in Pontiac, Michigan. Before I make my comments, I need y'all to check these mics to be sure that they are projecting, because at the ZBA meeting we were at, the guy had to come from the back to tell us that they couldn't have here. And I've been having difficulty hearing what's being said, so I hope the mics are working so that people can hear what's being said. I don't have to worry about them hearing what I'm saying, because my mouth is so loud, I'm a mic by myself. First of all, I want to say I am in support of this rezoning. I was at the ZBA meeting where I spoke up for a piece of property that been sitting around empty for 10 or 20 years, and nobody seemed to have had an idea or wanted to do anything again. Now here we are, faced again with the same problem. I know this property that they're talking about, and I'm sick of looking at it in the condition that it's in. Then the other thing that I hear rolling in with this is our three-year-long fight with marijuana. I'm sick of that too. It is time for us to think outside of the box. It's time for us to get a vision for this city other than empty, rotten-looking building. We got somebody who's coming forth, who's interested in an idea, trying to put it back in circulation. I keep hearing this business office and this other stuff. Y'all must be looking at property that I'm not looking at, because I don't see all of that business development and stuff that's going on in this area. Give him a chance! Give him a chance! Rezone it! You heard them say it'll go back to the old zoning if it doesn't work out. Give him a chance. Let's try to put a new face on Pontiac. Let's try to get some new taxes in here. I didn't hear him say, I don't know if he's asking for it, but I didn't hear him say he wanted a bunch of deals from the city and certain tax brownfield or none of that. I didn't hear any of that. But I'm asking you, take a drive, postpone it. That's what we, that's how we got a resolve with the other problem that we had. They took a postponement, they set up a special meeting, you heard the gentleman said, some of the information that he was being asked for, he just got the information yesterday. How many of us would be prepared to make a revision in a plan? And you get the information the day before you have to make the presentation? It won't hurt to postpone it, sit down. We came to a resolve with the other situation, because they met, the attorneys met, they looked at the other things, it was a give and take with it, and we got it resolved. We could do that. We could do that with this. So I'm asking you, please, give the rezoning that we need. And if you need to have a meeting, have a meeting, sit down, talk, work out the gives and takes and things. That's what progress is about. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Melanie Rutherford. I stay at 1018 Argyle Road. That's 1018 Argyle, right around the corner from the building that we're talking about. In the last four years, I, excuse me, strike that, three years, I have seen this building come from out of the ashes like the Phoenix. I also have seen their windows busted so much that this individual had to have cars parked there and trucks parked there to protect the integrity of the building. I speak from a standpoint, very simply, that it will create jobs and opportunities. I've watched words like "nigger" be painted on their, on their walls this week, and I walk past it every morning because I'm on a weight loss journey. I'm not asking you to give them the rezoning because I have any special interest, I don't. I'm not asking you to give the rezoning because I don't think that they're going to do a good business deal. What I'm asking you to is to see the opportunity in creating jobs and economic growth, and giving the opportunity where people who normally couldn't get those type of jobs to could walk right around the corner and actually be employed. I'm talking about the people that just are disenfranchised, that simply need a hand up and not a handout. But most importantly, I'm asking you, because I've watched these individuals serve in this city after being told no, over, and over, and over again. And at some point, we have to question our business tactics, ethics, and rules to say, are we inviting, are we engaging, or are we pushing people away because we may not like their approach or their business idea? Thinking outside of the box, as our quote for Matty Hatchet, is beyond that. I want to see people in my community, in District One, where I live and reside, given the opportunity to see something happen with the building that has been sitting empty for over 20 years. And again, if you don't know my name, my name is Melanie Rutherford, and I stay at 1018 Argyle Avenue.
Can everyone hear me? Hi, my name is Shaquandra Smith. I've been born and raised in Pontiac myself, and I've been all over and constantly, usually when I was younger, I used to run with a bunch of friends who played in the vacant lot. So that's being questioned or being proposed today at the, for a rezoning. I also agree that, I also want to go forward with this rezoning. From growing up and playing there, it was very dangerous for us kids to go there. Oftentimes, I would see a lot of smokers hanging out, some gang members hanging out, doing all types of crazy things, bashing windows, putting graffiti onto the walls. And I'm sick and tired of it. I want... I want there to be peace. I also want there to be job opportunities in Pontiac because myself, having been born and raised in Pontiac, I've had to look elsewhere for jobs. And I want there to be pride back into my city, and I believe that's possible with this rezoning, especially with something that has been constantly on the ballot with marijuana and its uses and just recently becoming official with use in the community as well. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners and Vern. Uh, my name is James. Uh, I do not stay in Pontiac, but I do spend a lot of my time in Pontiac. I currently work for Vince, the owner of the buildings. I've been working for him, well, I've been knowing him since I was seven years old. So, uh, you know, he's been my mentor this whole time, and I'm currently employed by him by managing his properties, not only in Pontiac. He also owns properties in Frazier, Michigan. He also owns properties in Detroit as well. So, my job is to pretty much oversee those properties, oversee construction, oversee maintenance, uh, land, landscaping, you name it, I handle it. So, um, with this particular buildings that he acquired in 2017, uh, when we first got there, I was, uh, I was a little shocked by what I saw. Uh, saw a lot of, uh, you know, uh, needles on the ground, crap pipes, rodents, rats, you name it, we seen it. And I had to put my gloves on and put my boots on and go in and try to make this thing look a little respectable. And, you know, we went in, cleaned it up, um, boarded up windows, boarded up open areas that was accessible, um, made it safe, made it safe for the neighborhood. I went by personally, walked the neighborhoods myself. I walked through, talked to the neighbors. The neighbors personally have my cell phone number. Whenever they have a problem, they always give me a call. Um, I, I frequent the building at least three times a week. Um, so, you know, first hand, you know, we, we just want to get this building just rezoned. We just want to get it, you know, into a spot to where it makes the neighborhood look safe, it makes it look inviting, and by, by that building being off of South Telegraph, it is the literally first piece of property that Pontiac has entering into the city of Pontiac through the South Telegraph side. Wouldn't you guys like to see something be done there more than what we have already shown in the last two years? We have invested over $200,000 in re-bricking of the Golf Drive building. Uh, we put new windows in, um, you know, just to have them broken out, just to have graffiti over the walls now. I had to send a couple pictures to Vince over the weekend. Um, a couple months ago, we were having semi-trucks parked there, and I told him, I said, hey, look, we don't want any rent from you, but if you can just keep an eye out on my building, here's my cell phone number, as long as you're not littering, as long as you clean up my parking lot, that's all I want. And it, it was doing a great job of curbing the, uh, curbing the things that were happening to the building, such as breaking out of the windows, which costs $500 every time we called the window guy out there to go replace it, um, graffiti, stuff like that. But then we were told that the property was not zoned for semi-truck parking, and then I had to tell the semi-truck drivers to leave. And then when that happened, now they're back to breaking the windows again. Now they're back to doing graffiti over the brand-new brickwork that we just completed last year, and I'm just frustrated and I'm just ready for a change. Uh, I've been frequently in Pontiac the last four years, helping clean parks with Vince, helping clean numerous streets. Uh, we helped out Melanie in her district. We helped out Mikel Goodman in his district. Um, you know, so we, we've just been anchors for the community, just trying to be good community partners at this point. So, that's all I want to say. Thank you very much.
And if I may, Chair, if there are no public comments, we did receive today two email public comments I would like to read into the record.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right. Uh, the first, uh, public comment reads, "Dear Pontiac Planning Commission, I reject the rezoning of parcel number 641431381027, uh, 6411431458010 and 641431381009 for medical marijuana growing and processing for the following reason. The light manufacturing involves the use of hazardous, the light manufacturing involves the use of hazardous chemicals that can leak into the environment and aquifers. Reading from the news, the manufacturing facilities will abandon the site, leaving the environment contaminated. The areas are valuable, and we pay enough taxes for that area, and we cannot afford to devalue our property. Marijuana itself attracts crime, and extra policing will be required, extra policing will be required for the environment, which the city cannot provide. The zoning right now is for offices and medical complexes, which is the appropriate and ideal use of that space in that area because it is close to the golf course. The smell of growing and processing marijuana is pungent and irritating and should not be near a living environment. For some individuals, the smell of marijuana brings an allergic reaction to them, and they cannot move away from their homes in which they have been living for all of their lives. The appropriate thing is for the applicant, Get Your Greens, to look for a space zoned by the city for marijuana." Thank you, resident. Uh, I, I cannot pronounce the name. I can spell it, but I cannot pronounce it.
I think it would be appropriate, you can read it into the record. I mean, since we require it for public hearing for those to state their name and address.
Understood. It, they did not provide the address, but the name is Ayo Deji Ebeji. I can spell it. It's A-Y-O-D-E-J-I, uh, last name A-B-E-J-I-D-E. And they did not provide a, uh, address.
As long as the minute taker can get that.
Okay. Um, the second comment, uh, he emailed and then he did call, he did request to be anonymous. Uh, he did make that specific request. Um, "This subject is very, very opposed to Get Your Greens LLC locating at 645 South Telegraph and 1056 Golf Drive. To Pontiac City Planner Donovan Smith, I am writing this email to you as a resident of the neighborhood adjacent to the above properties. I and other, and others in my neighborhood are strongly opposed to parcel 641431381027, 641431458 and 01, uh, 010 and 641431381-009 be rezoned for the purpose of medical marijuana grow and processing facilities. We are vehemently opposed to ever in any similar to it. Thank you, District One resident." And those are the two comments that were, uh, read into the, uh, public comments emailed to us today.
Okay. Um, if there are no further public comments, I'm going to close the portion of the public comments. Um, I don't believe there were any questions. It was more comments. But I do want to clarify, and I don't know if it's my place to, but through the process of growing marijuana, there's nothing that's hazardous that is going to pollute or cause an issue with that property being sold or renovated to another person. Um, yeah. Um, if you'd like to comment, go ahead.
Couple more things that I wanted to address. Number one, I don't know if the neighborhood knows, but a dispensary was just approved around the corner from me. Secondly, this is not spot zoning. If you see the last page of the packet that I provided with you, there's M1 located northwest of me and it, and to the south of me, there's a huge parcel of land in West Bloomfield that is also M1. So, this is not spot zoning. There's, this is multi-zoning in that area. And Frank, you wanted to say a couple more things?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. For the record, Frank Kerr. I am an attorney representing the applicant here this evening. Um, likewise, uh, I know my client just received, uh, this packet yesterday, but, um, I was in mediation today, and apologies if I have to move slowly through this because I've just had an opportunity to review this, uh, response by the planning commission just prior to this meeting. As I listened to the presentation and the enumeration of the rezoning criteria, understandably, uh, these can be subjective elements. Um, these aren't, uh, mathematical or scientifically derived, um, but being as they are, uh, have some inherent subjectivity to them, um, I certainly do have some differing perspectives on the various, uh, criteria. Uh, as to criteria number one, um, is to the consistency with the goals, policies, objectives. I don't think the goals, policies, and objectives of the master plan is to have property that is, um, going to be historically vacant. Twenty years is a pretty long window into whether or not this master plan, as this property is currently zoned, is going to succeed as a C1. If my client had any opportunity to lease this building out, then go through the cost and expense of maintaining a building for several years, of trying to make improvements, of trying to do various rezoning efforts, he would have gladly leased us out to, uh, a hospital or, or medical use or office. And as he indicated, he in fact tried to do that a few years ago, um, got it rezoned, um, but then circumstances changed and the market, uh, for medical and office has certainly deteriorated considerably, um, as a result of world events. Um, no need to comment on number two, since that was acknowledged. As far as number three, uh, that is, goes to what I was just saying about the evidence of a reasonable return. Um, there has, uh, this building has been consistently marketed for lease, um, and there has not even been a single, uh, letter of intent or proposal for, uh, lease made to my client, uh, during his ownership of it. And again, um, the history of this building is that this building has not found any use, uh, that the market, uh, the free market says is of any use to, uh, a consumer over the last twenty years. Um, as to number four, uh, the compatibility with potential uses allowed in the proposed zoning district with surrounding uses, land suitability, density of nature, um, again, as my client indicated, uh, the, uh, area to the west, northwest, immediately to him is zoned M1, immediately to the east, southeast is zoned M1. I understand that that is not in the city of Pontiac, so it doesn't necessarily come under your purview. Um, but if you consider the area as a whole, uh, like my client said, this is not spot zoning, and there are other M1 classifications in the area. And as was pointed out by, uh, the commissioner just a few minutes ago, while this is being asked for as a rezoning for M1, this isn't, uh, light industrial or light manufacturing in the sense that normally we would consider these things to be. Um, perhaps, uh, if the, uh, uh, master plan was, um, uh, redone, uh, there might be new uses or new zoning classifications like some municipalities are. Detroit is actually considering, I'm sorry?
Do you understand, though, that with the conditions that you set before us, that that M1 will stay M1 even if this proposed use does not go forward?
I put in there after four years, if it wasn't rezoned, revert back to the city.
Okay. So, it would revert back? Yes, sir.
To the Chair, two things. First, I'll take responsibility for the fact that your packet got to you yesterday. I was out of town for a week and a half, and between trying to get this packet out because of some other underlying agenda items that did not make it, uh, that's the reason for the delay. And secondly, I, I did find in here, let me just read in regards to how this reverter reads. Um, "If the owner fails to meet the time limitations set forth in section two point or two C above, including any extensions granted by the city, or if the owner notifies the city in writing that it no longer intends to develop the property in accordance with the development plans, then the zoning of the property shall revert to C1 zoning classification."
Okay. But the uses is what I'm pointing out. If this was to be rezoned, M1 opens the door to a lot of different manufacturing, not just the medical marijuana processing.
But this would be subject to this particular use under this agreement.
Okay.
And, and if I, sorry, if I may, through the Chair, um, the conditional rezonings tie the specific uses, uh, to that use, um, to that designated change. So, they are requesting a zoning change into a district that would allow that use and additional uses, but the condition of the rezoning would only allow a medical grow and processor. So, I believe what you're looking for is if this, uh, the occupant or the applicant proposing to provide that use, if they were to leave the site, the only uses that could come back would be another applicant who wants to either continue that use, or they would have to, as Vern indicated, uh, provide that in writing that they want to forego the conditions of that rezoning, um, and then it would revert back, um, to the other uses.
Okay.
Thank you for that clarification. So, this building would only be used under this proposal for, uh, for grow and processing of medical marijuana. So, we're not talking cutting oils and other machining-type operations that might normally be associated with light manufacturing. Number five, no need to reply. Uh, capability of the street system to safely and efficiently accommodate. I recognize, uh, that, uh, that the location off of Telegraph was acknowledged to be sufficient, although then there's talk about golf. I mean, we begin to narrow this down considerably. I mean, we, we say that, first of all, there's no need to enter off of golf. Um, second of all, i- if the proposal or the, the, um, the preferred use is for office and medical, you still have employees, just like you would for a grow and processing. In fact, I would say you'd have fewer grow, uh, and processing employees than you would have medical or laboratory employees. I've been in grow processing facilities. You're talking thousands of square feet that no one's in 24 hours out of the day. So, the, the type of employees and number of employees would be considerably fewer with a grow and processing operation. Deliveries likewise, you don't have, uh, lab cars coming in and out, picking up labs and dropping off lab results. Uh, and also, with medical or office, you have patients, you have clients coming in and out. So, if we're talking about apples to apples, uh, that should definitely weigh in favor of this particular use because the street systems and safety surrounding the street systems would be much more safe for this particular use than the, uh, current classification of C1 that would allow office and medical. Um, number seven, the boundaries requested in the zoning are reasonable in relationship to the surrounding and, uh, to the surroundings and construction of the site will be able to meet the dimensional regulations. Um, again, uh, this clearly is within reasonable relationship to the surroundings as previously discussed. Um, number eight, if a zoning is appropriate, the requested zoning district is considered to be more appropriate from the city's perspective than any, than another zoning district. Well, here, we're saying the rezoning is appropriate because the only way you can operate a grow and processing is for it to be M1, and there is no other more appropriate zoning classification. It's the only one. So, I don't even see, it's just illogical to me to say that, uh, the existing C1 should remain when the requested use is for grown processing. If, if the commission just doesn't want to approve grown processing, then that, uh, element there, uh, would be nullified, but otherwise, uh, that element there is, is not one that could be escorted against my client. Um, number nine, if the request for a specific use in rezoning of the land is considered to be more appropriate than amending the list of permitted, likewise, you can't amend the list of permitted and special land uses. Uh, you can't amend C1 to allow grown processing. So, that again is, I don't understand how that was marked as do not comply. And number 10, the requested rezoning will not create an isolated or incompatible zone. I've discussed that already. You have M1 light manufacturing to the east northeast. Um, you have M1 light manufacturing to the, uh, I'm sorry, to the west, northwest, and to the east, southeast. And you also have a mix of uses, uh, in the area, and as my client just indicated, a recently approved, uh, medical marijuana dispensary. Um, I think if a fair, uh, reading of the 10 criteria, uh, is taken and some time is taken to consider each one of those elements, I think the 10 criteria weigh heavily in my client's favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Val, do you have any comments or questions?
Mr. Val, do you have any comments or questions for the?
Yes, I do. First, more comments than questions. I can imagine it being frustrating for you guys, because it's frustrating for me too. We've been doing this for a while, and to Angela Taylor's point, we're open for business. I want that to be clear. And I think that a lot of the adversity about some of these projects is from people that don't live in Pontiac and who have not seen the abandoned buildings and who are not planning to occupy any of these abandoned buildings anytime soon, as is evident. The other thing I want to say is, this may be an anomaly, and it sets a precedent, but I think it sets a good precedent that we are open for business and we are open for negotiation and compromise. I know Angelo Taylor, I know some of the partnerships that you've had, I know some of the projects that you've dealt with and in, and I know that you're credible, and I don't see that this is any different. And so I'm just, for the record, I'm in support. So that's what I have to say.
Commissioner McGinnis, do you have any comments or questions?
Yes, thank you. Some of the documentation provided for the site plan references, Phase One and Phase Two, is that a practical application for the proposal, or is the intention for it to be one comprehensive project? What would that be indicating to us?
Well, my ultimate goal is to wait for the recreational marijuana provisioning center applications to come out, hopefully to be able to win one of those, and then have a site where it has grow, processing, and dispensary all located in one parcel or conjoining parcels. So my initial plan is to do the medical marijuana until the recreational ordinance comes out, hopefully sometime soon.
But so, when I'm looking at Phase One and Phase Two, and there's a delineation and the building to the east is Phase One, how should the community and this Planning Commission interpret that designation?
Well, I plan on working on one building at a time.
Okay. And obviously, you're referencing Provisioning Center, but what we're looking at here in terms of site plan is for a grow and processor situation. Is that building to the east, and I apologize, I don't have the parcel number or the address committed to memory, but the eastern building that's adjacent to the long open parking lot, would that be sufficient to be the growing and processing facility for your first phase?
Yes, sir.
What would the community and residents be expecting in terms of volume? Are you, is it, there's multiple floors for the building, so are they looking at the entire capacity of the building, functional?
Yes, sir. It's three floors, I believe it's like 16,000 square feet.
The landscape plan looks very promising in terms of an upgrade for what's the surface level parking lot, that that would be enhanced. What is the current situation for the Dover Street P1 lot? What would, what do the residents on Dover Street see currently? Is it used at all, or is it dormant? I mean, obviously, it's not a functional facility or facilities, but is there a remnants of a surface level parking lot that's overgrown, or what's going on there?
Well, originally, when I bought the property, there was old junker cars there, I had those removed. Now it's an empty field, I've been maintaining the grass. I plan to build a fence around the whole property, so it would not, you know, the neighbors to the left and to the right would not be affected by, you know, people parking there and whatnot. Obviously, asphalt or concrete parking lot would go there.
So that would be the intention, be it for this short term and long term, that the P1, that's currently P1, would actually be utilized as parking lot? The landscape plan, I think, very adequately addresses that and makes it harmonious and compatible with the nearby neighborhood. The, for staff, I show on this map that the links at Crystal Lake, formerly the Pontiac Municipal Golf Course, has a manufacturing zoning. Can you help me understand what gives with that? If we know the backstory, obviously, this might be some historic situation, but is that common for golf courses to be zoned?
No.
Manufacturing?
No, it would be, typically, it's either, in our, in the city of Pontiac, would be R-1, one family residential.
Okay, so in the city of Pontiac side, zoning is currently R1, one family dwelling for the links at Crystal Lake. Across Golf Drive in the Bloomfield Township portion, it is owned Light Manufacturing District. So next to the Sunoco Gas Station, and so for the community's reference, that Sunoco Gas Station, that's located in Bloomfield Township, not in the city of Pontiac? At the, that red southern corner?
The, yes, the gas station, I do believe that is a Pontiac gas station. It's not in Pontiac.
I believe that's Bloomfield, if I'm not mistaken.
So Baylor Young Light Manufacturing District across the street, that is a Bloomfield Township Light Manufacturing District?
Correct.
Okay. And Kitty Corner, Service King, City of Sylvan Lake, where Service King and Inland Lakes Landscaping, that's M1 Light Manufacturing, but that's external to the city of Pontiac. Home Depot is zoned C4 Suburban Business. Can you illuminate this commission and the community, what C4 Suburban Business allows for, and other examples that we would have in the city of Pontiac for C4?
We don't have too many. We obviously have that location for Home Depot. So you're talking about large retailers, auto sales, service, dealerships. The other prime location would be Oakland Point on Telegraph north of Elizabeth Lake.
That's zoned C4?
Yeah.
And if I may add, the Oakland Point parcels, those parcels immediately south, so it's the other shopping center, can't think of the exact name, but the shopping center, there's a right lane on the corner, that is zoned C4. Majority of the Center Point area on South Boulevard, that portion of the city, the Diamond Corridor, has a large portion of C4 where the new 2100 Updike facility is. The large logistics plant, that area is also C4.
Thank you. That's more of a sidebar, just to help me understand the different impacts of zoning decisions. So for M1 Light Manufacturing, for manufacturing of M1, for these parcels in question, to confirm, it would be conditional for four years, and it would be for only the use of growing and processing?
Correct. Unless there is a, it states here, includes any extensions granted by the city, or if the owner notifies in writing that it no longer intends to develop the property, so that could be even sooner than four years.
So it's not necessarily a switcheroo saying, oh, surprise, it's this manufacturing, it's more so after assessing, it's not viable, so therefore, it's closing the doors on this conditional M1 manufacturing situation?
So what happens is, is that on our zoning map, you'll see, it'll say like M1, it'll be color coded M1, and then it'll have CR, conditional rezoning. So somebody that's looking it up will want to go to that parcel and look for that agreement or underneath that parcel number and get that information regardless of what that agreement states. Because that agreement, for approvals, like similar to the one we just said on West Lawrence, that was approved by City Council, so that agreement has been vetted probably, I'm sure, between their attorneys and the city's attorney district to look it over again, so both individuals that could, between the mayor and the applicant or the owner, can execute the agreement.
The, it's concerning to hear about so much property damage, petty crime, et cetera. Why is this site in particular receiving so much hate? Why is there receiving so much action? Is there something going on in the Washington Park subdivision, apart from Melanie Rutherford living there, that, is there something going on in the Washington Park subdivision that's causing this, or is it the matter of it being out of the visibility or of passersby? And my question is more so not just to vent about it, but to ask about what should we expect as a municipality, no matter what the next use is? Is there something, is there some greater intervention that's necessary here to protect any redevelopment or any zoning classification or use? What's going on at this particular corner? Because it sounds like there's a special abundance of activity, based on your descriptions.
Well, I like to say it's very disheartening, because I put a lot of time, obviously money, into the building. I put a, basically a fake security guard, I mean, car out there, I bought a car and just put security on there, I put cameras on there, I put new lights out there. I don't know the reason. I personally think because Pontiac doesn't have a police force anymore, and it's just kind of whatever.
It exists today, it is vacant. There used to be a former parking lot a long, long time ago, that no longer exists, and it has remained vacant since. As mentioned, the parcel is zoned C1 Local Business, designated or designed to accommodate housing and commercial uses that cater the local community and other retail uses. Briefly, in the previous meeting, we did review the special exemption criteria or the specific use criteria, I apologize, for automobile service uses. The applicant did provide a site plan where the setbacks did comply with the ordinance. The criteria B for operations within the enclosed building, such as repairs, wouldn't apply, but the proposed use of car wash would be operated within an enclosed building. In the C1 district, you are limited to no more than three service bays. This project only would have two service bays. And then there are specific screening requirements when adjacent to residential uses, and it does require a Type B buffer, which was a point of conversation at the last meeting, and we'll briefly touch on that soon here. There are comments in the last meeting related to the traffic capacity, I believe, that was brought up by councilperson Carrington, and does the road maintain proper capacity, or what would the impacts of this development have on that road? We did pull the MDOT Annual Average Daily Traffic Study, and it did show that in 2019 was likely one of the largest, not largest, but in the most recent years, one of the larger average daily traffic counts at roughly 19,000 vehicles annually, that average daily amount. Whereas in 2020, it's actually down to 16,000, and then between the 2019 era time period and 2022, it's actually kind of gone down and up, most likely as a result to the behavior patterns changes related to COVID and working from home. But however, that Jocelyn Avenue does have the capacity, as it did, carry predominantly most, if not a large amount of the traffic related to GM when it was operating at that time. So based on the information we've researched and the historical nature of that corridor, we do believe that Jocelyn Avenue would not be negatively impacted by this proposed car wash. And then, go ahead, Vern.
If I may, we also found in regards to, when you take a look at trends in regards to what number of lanes on roadway, so when you have four lanes, two in each direction with a center turn lane, typically, you're looking at roughly, that type of roadway can start to have capacity problems, anything above like, say, 37,000 vehicles per day. Okay? So we're at the threshold of roughly 18 and lower, you know, on average. So we do have, definitely have the capacity, and as Donovan was saying, when GM was at its height, there was 55,000 people were going to work there every day. And now we have maybe like 10, you know? So the capacity from a road perspective, you know, I think, no matter what his generation is, or number of vehicles per day, or whatever, it's going to be minuscule increase in traffic. And usually, in talking with some good friends of mine, own car washes similar to what's being proposed, and their business plan always looks to capture a certain number of passing vehicles. In other words, if you're driving down the street, almost say, oh, I need a car wash, it's not busy, I'm just going to stop in. So it's not like people are driving specifically to go there. So traffic shouldn't be in this.
Thank you. The applicant did provide an updated site plan, and I will briefly touch on to the changes regarding landscaping in the next slide. And then we also had conversations with the applicant as it related to hours of operation. That was a topic of concern or question. The zoning ordinance does not restrict this specific use as it relates to noise. Our municipal code does have a noise ordinance that is observed at 10:00 PM. So while the applicant would be permitted to operate a facility that may generate a level of noise, it would not be until there are substantial complaints, if that were to occur, where the noise ordinance would allow the flexibility to require changes to the hours of operation. And then in the next slide, I'll touch on the screening requirements that would further assist in providing a type of buffer between the existing site, the potential noise, and the residential properties to the west. So in your packets, the applicant did provide the landscaping plan, and previously, I did mention the required Type B buffer. And there are several criteria that go into what that buffer requires. It does require a buffer at least five feet wide. That may need to be adjusted on this plan. It does not appear to be a complete five-foot-wide buffer. That is a minor change that can be implemented and then approved in the final site plan. The applicant did provide the required six-foot-high masonry wall. That is a requirement for that buffer requirement, so that is included. The Type B buffer does not have a requirement for any deciduous trees, or let me take a step back. The Type B buffer allows for two types of screening. There is a screening with a wall, and there's a screening without a wall. The screening with a wall does not require any additional trees. They can include the wall, and the ordinance says that is adequate. The other screening, which does not require a wall, it's a trade-off. It's if you have a wall, you have no trees. If you have trees, a wall is not required. This buffer that is provided does have a wall, so that requirement for a wall is included. However, trees and shrubs would not be included. Based on the plan provided, the applicant has provided trees in addition to the screening wall requirement, where they do have, that portion of the property is lined with evergreen trees, 56 in total across the site, but 34 actually, in addition to one deciduous tree, which would be located in that bottom left corner on your screen. So the applicant has met the requirements for the Type B buffer that is required with the special exemption permit for automotive service uses. The applicant did provide elevations, which did not change. They were in compliance in the previous site plan and in our previous meeting, so the elevations would remain the same and are provided to you. When we look at the standards for site plan approval, the applicant, the site plan does meet those standards, in addition to the specific standards for the use and the categorized standards for site plan approval provided in the technical report that is in your packets. There are conditions that would be associated with this final site plan approval. There are conditions that would be associated with this final site plan approval and those would be as follows. First, the planning commission does approve the site plan review 22-01 that we are reviewing today. Any changes related to the technical site plan review and comments from Water for Fire Department, Department of Public Works Engineering and Site Plan, any comments that have yet to be addressed would be included in the final approval. The applicant will continue to meet all the requirements for landscaping design, the general site landscaping requirements, which they do meet, the specific requirements related to section 4.405, the buffer type B such as requiring that five foot wide buffer, grass buffer, and then the section 4.406 for parking lot landscaping requirements, which they have demonstrated compliance with. And lastly, there were requests that renderings be provided of the site and how it may function and how it may look when it is completed. So those are provided in your packet and here on the screen as well. So in this image, you are looking at the site as if you were standing at that intersection at Second and Jocelyn, looking towards the back corner of the property. In the upper left, you can see the screening, the wall screening. It doesn't show the actual evergreen trees that are proposed in the site plan, but it shows shrubs, but that is where the evergreen trees would be located, screening the back of that property from the adjacent residential home. Again, more images from the street and these are in your package, so I won't belabor these. And then that's the last one in this presentation. And that concludes the presentation for the site plan.
Thank you. Okay, yeah, this was already before us and I believe most of the requirements that we were talking about have been met. Commissioner Duval, do you have any comments or questions?
I do not.
Commissioner McGinnis, do you have any comments or questions?
Welcome back. Thank you very much for the work that was put in, staff and applicant, for the final touches. I feel very excited and comfortable for us to approve the final site plan review. I think it'll be a great addition to our community and, and the renderings look beautiful. That's it.
Commissioner Ross?
Thank you. Yes, yes. Good job, good job. One question, I was reading through my package. Was I mistaken? Did I see something about the photometric, photometric items submitted did not comply?
I will review that. I believe they did.
Okay, I was going down. I thought I saw that when I was looking through my package. And that was the only thing they, and I believe the area of intensity that was too high was on the other side of the buffer.
Okay.
Yeah. That, that's what I was reading very, very quickly. But other than that, I mean, yeah, I think this is a wonderful addition to that corner of Second and Jocelyn.
And I, I am checking, just reviewing the photometrics now.
Speaks of foot candles, which I do not know what it means, but that foot candles exceeded at property lines and that is why the does not comply site plan details box was checked, but that might be before these additional buffer considerations were made. Because I recall it when it was here before as well.
Well, that and also the type of fixture, the light fixture that's used and.
Shielded and all of that.
Yeah, yeah. But I, I just saw that there and I said, hmm, okay, what does that mean?
And, and briefly, as I look at it, that, that may be just comments from that previous review. The photometrics, they do not exceed the foot candles at the property line, which would be in excess of one. In addition to, there is a wattage requirements where you are not allowed to have light fixtures with wattages in excess of two hundred and fifty. And I just reviewed them. They are below two hundred and fifty and they do not have those foot candles at the property line in excess of one.
And what's the technical definition of foot candle?
The technical definition.
Or at least an understandable ver.
It's the measurement of light at specific points.
Understood, thank you.
In our ordinance, they're measured at five feet above grade. And then at the property lines, they are limited to one. For the site as a whole, they are not to exceed ten foot candle. And the higher that number is, the more light, the brighter that light is.
Good for you. Commissioner Shepherd?
He did exactly what we asked for. I mean, I think that was nice to see. He came back with more than we asked for, I think. So I think it's exactly what we want. I'm good.
Commissioner Parlov?
Nice job.
Everything looks great. I was intrigued by the aerial shots. It looked like your, your car wash is up in the Upper Peninsula. There are many houses around, but I still think it's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience tonight, too. I am comfortable with the proposal. Does anyone have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the final site plan review SPR 22-10 from Ali Ajami, parcel identification number sixty-four, fourteen, sixteen, three twenty-eight, zero three one and zero three two, and allowing, and allow the planning manager authorization to grant final site plan approval.
Support.
Go call.
Give me a moment here. Okay. Commissioner McGinnis?
Yes, to approve.
Vice Chair Parlov?
Yes, to approve.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes, to approve.
Commissioner Northcross?
Yes, to approve.
Commissioner Duval?
Yes, to approve.
Chair Fegley?
Yes, to approve.
Most pass, six zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can't wait to get my car washed. Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, seven point two, which is schedule special meeting on August twenty-fourth.
I, I guess, I made a kind of more of a formal thing. We're looking to, it's related to Crown Enterprise, the concrete batch plant facility.
Okay. My personal feeling on that is unless there's an absolute compelling reason why we have to do a special meeting, I would prefer to have whatever they would like to present to us presented at the September meeting. I don't know how my other commissioners feel, but that's kind of where I'm at with that.
If I, if I could shed a little bit of light on, there had, the reason there was a little bit of disconnect, I believe, in regards to what was happening to get us to this point. And, and again, I hate to, I'll take blame because I was out of town and was not probably paying attention too much to my emails and knowing the way back and forth. What happened is, is that the zoning map application, the request has changed and the parcel numbers have changed. They've increased the, the number of parcels that would be considered for rezoning also. So it, it, there's a lot of missing part, missing information that they were scrambling to put together. So I'm just requesting that, I, I know that they, they, the applicant would be quite, would be honored to be making sure they could be on the twenty-fourth agenda, put it that way, because they are pushing because of certain projects and commitments to at least get the response that they need from the planning commission and then move forward.
Chair Fegley?
Yes.
So in addition to the applicant having time sensitivity, there's some considerations that the mayor's office and the city council has because of a related aspect of this development. So if your schedule allowed, it might be very helpful for us to know where the planning commission stands because, and, and the planning manager might have a more up-to-date sense of this, but Crown Enterprises in comprehensive nature of wanting to put this application forward and receive favorable consideration from the city, is contemplating the donation of many dozens of acres on related parcels that would do many, many things, but add a great deal of value to the, the city of Pontiac. And so we want to know where the planning commission stands on that before that offer expires, if you will. And I don't have enough, you know, knowledge to say what those time sensitive deadlines are, but Crown Enterprises had submitted their application to be at this evening's meeting, but in order to satisfy the requirements for posting with that updated final agreement with what they were negotiating with the city of Pontiac, that's what created that or limited our ability to consider that tonight. And the planning manager might be able to say if my interpretation is right or not.
Spot on.
May I?
Yeah.
Did their plans change? I mean, the plans for this facility, did it change? It's still the same thing, right?
It's still the same thing, but they're, they're looking at some other, the site plan probably will expand also in regards to the batch plan.
So how do we, how do we, I think we were all against this idea for what it was going to do to the community?
Correct.
How, how do we backtrack because they're trying to, I mean, we don't get to have, we don't get to have a say in the.
No, I understand. An applicant obviously has his right.
They have the right.
You know, to be here and, and not, at that time, they just made a presentation. So you didn't, you have not seen any technical reviews. You have not seen the conditional rezoning agreement that's been flushed out and I, hopefully it's not going to change anymore, better not. That, so that's just coming before us. So I, I would just ask, you know, let's be open, just like we're here in regards to our, Vin Sario in regards to his project and tabling it and giving, you know, making sure that everything is moving forward or moving in the right direction and give us some time to think, and plus giving more time for him to prepare. Same thing here. And I, I usually typically don't, I don't like particularly adding another meeting on with, for, for planning commission. I know times are valuable, particularly in August in the summer and I understand, but this one here is pretty critical for not just the applicant, but for the city of Pontiac.
Thank you. One of the bigger concerns was where they're bringing their trucks through. So if they've changed the proposal, is there another way to get their trucks into another area?
They're looking at, yeah, they're.
I mean, I think that's, that would be the thing that might.
Yeah.
Change some of our views.
Yes, yeah, yeah. It probably will. It probably will change some of your, your opinions. I can't say totally, but it will change maybe your, the direction that you would go in. That's why I think it's important you see the full, the full package of what this needs to present.
And I won't be here that day, so if it's about a quorum, I'm one that won't be here. I'm out of town on that day.
You will or won't be?
I will, I'll be out of town. I won't be here that day. Got a trip.
Okay. Okay.
Would anyone else like to speak on the matter?
Well, how about, let's consider this.
I'm not available August twenty-fourth either, so it would be up to the remaining. Because the twenty-fourth is not going to be either.
Okay. I mean, obviously I got to have four people here for a quorum, so.
That would be us.
Well, I plan to attend if we hold the meeting.
Okay.
I would be available.
Is it a bad thing to put it off to ten days or whatever it is?
Yeah.
Yeah, it is? Because that's the option.
Yeah.
No pressure.
The package that we're going to consider will be available when?
Yeah, when do we get to review all this information that's?
Uh, if, if you tell me it's a go, I, we will post it in regards, well, as needed in the paper. And I will confirm tomorrow also that all the pieces parts are here and I will call the applicant. Actually, I have a call into him about something else anyway, so. I would say, we can probably get it to you by Monday.
I'm also available April, April, August twenty-second, Monday night, if that makes it easier for anybody.
Not for me.
But does the twenty-fourth work?
We have to keep in mind, we have to keep in mind, we got the fifteen day notice, too. I think we can make that, but we'll have to see.
It's possible.
And also I've been try, as for some new committee, any, anytime we did have special meetings, particularly when we were looking at ordinances and stuff like that, always tried to pick a Wednesday. It was just our method of madness, so to speak. We always met on Wednesdays, so it might be, you know, the third Wednesday.
Will there be four for the twenty-fourth or did we only have three?
Right now, I think I'm, I'm good.
I'm good.
Things pop up.
Right now, I think I'm good. I can't, I won't confirm until I see, until I know more.
Lord willing.
Okay. Do I take a vote or you just want to tell me if you can be here or not?
Lord willing, I'm planning on being here.
Okay. So I got Chris, Mona.
I will know more in about an hour, if that helps you. Right now, I'm, I look like I'm here.
Okay, okay. You don't have to take a formal vote. All I ask you to do is by noon tomorrow, you have to email me if you'll be here or not.
Okay.
On the twenty-fourth.
I can do that.
And then go from there. I.
So we don't need to do a motion on this then?
No.
Okay. All right. I will open for public comment at the end of the meeting if anyone would like to speak.
Good evening once again. My name is Melanie Rutherford. I stay at ten eighteen Argyle. I appreciate you guys for doing your due diligence and tabling that. I think it gives people an opportunity to present something better. My only thought is that, I've learned this in council, because sometimes I'm very passionate when I don't agree about things, is that we'll be slow to talk and, excuse me, slow to, excuse me, slow to talk and quick to listen. It is important that we make sure that we tell everyone, even if we don't agree with them, that this is a city where we want to see business. And I applaud Ms. Perelove for doing her due diligence. Did I say your name right, ma'am? Ms. Perelove?
Parlove.
Parlove, thank you.
Power like golf and love like tennis.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I appreciate her for doing her due diligence and explaining to me why it was illegal. Didn't know that they were, so for that I appreciate. But most importantly, I just want us to see growth in the city of Pontiac. I was born and raised here. I'm a fifth generation of someone that was born and raised here and I have the pleasure of being a part of the solution and I want us all to be a part of the solution. So again, I thank you for giving me an understanding because the Bible says in all that ways, get an understanding and I hope to see you guys do something great for the city. Thank you so much.
All right, if there are no further public comments, I'm gonna.
Can I make an announcement?
Yeah.
Okay. This is from the Water Resource Commission and there will be a town hall meeting, and this has probably been announced in a number of places, but let me announce it again, Thursday, August the eleventh. And this is concerning a plan for water affordability that's going to be proposed, a proposed plan for water affordability. And this meeting on Thursday, August the eleventh at seven PM will be held here at Pontiac City Hall. Now, this affordability plan has a number of factors and features in it that I know I've set on that affordability task force to come up with this plan. I'd wholeheartedly recommend that, that folks, at the very least, listen in, possibly, if possible, to attend this town hall meeting about water affordability.
For the community, there is, there will be two opportunities on Monday, August fifteenth, to have an information session about the Pike Street improvements that'll be made as well as the Clinton River Trail Connector. That is again, Monday, August fifteenth. The first session is eleven AM to one PM here at Pontiac City Hall in the council chambers. And then the evening session is at seven PM at Prospect Missionary Baptist Church at three eighty-one Prospect Street during the Eastside Community Meeting. It'll be the focus of our Eastside Community Meeting. So it's impacting Districts One, District Seven for the city's footprint where we're reconstructing Pike Street, but also adding recreational and aesthetic, aesthetic improvements as well as a connector opportunity for the Clinton River Trail. So it'll have a big impact on the neighborhood and the downtown and so we welcome the community that might have questions or want to learn more about that information. Thank you.
I learned this from experience today. The recycling bins, railroad cars, whatever you want to call them, that are located at GFL at eight-eight-eight Baldwin, that's available to the residents through the week, are not accessible to the residents right now. They have not been for a couple of weeks because they're doing a big project there, apparently. You can see there's construction going on at the GFL transfer facility. And if you want to take your recycling, you need to take it to Collier Road in Highwood, and the hours there are eight until four through the week. I asked if it was something that was gated, and they told me that they are sitting in an area that you can drive up if, for some reason, you don't make it there by four PM. So don't take your recycling to eight-eight-eight Baldwin just yet, because you won't be leaving it there, you're going to drive away with it. That's all.
All right, I will close public comments. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Let's adjourn.
May I have a second?
The floor.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Mike, did all those commissioners receive this?